Welcome to our board meeting. The pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Donald Jernigan.
I pledge with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, whoever did it to us for our own.
Okay, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
For move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Let's see, visitors, Mr. John Sneed. Mr. Sneed, if you'll come forward. Welcome.
Thank you.
I've had some email correspondence with Mr. Sneed, as has Mr. Odom, and he's gonna ask us to waive something in a minute, and so just to let you know that we have had some communication with him. So with that, Mr. Sneed, welcome, and please state your case.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Members of the school board, tonight I'm asking for your support and reconsideration before an exchange student's late application and request to become part of our community as a student at Central Magnet School for the upcoming academic year. Although the July fifteenth deadline for consideration is passed, I respectfully ask that you allow the student to complete the process and join us as soon as possible. Anna Sorenson is a high school student from Norway, applied for placement with AFS International, an organization with a long history of partnership with Rutherford County Schools. Several months ago, she was accepted into the program and placed with an East Tennessee host family, and was scheduled to arrive in East Tennessee last weekend, just in time to begin her exchange year with the high school in Farragut. On July twenty first, AFS was notified by the selected host family that due to a recent job loss and an impending relocation, they would not be able to host her as planned. So you can imagine that with less than three weeks to go before the start of school, this child had no doubt already begun packing, planning, googling the state of Tennessee details for a year abroad, and was told that she would not be able to take part in the program. So after last minute scrambling to find another suitable selection or another solution, AFS reached out to me due to my previous work over the past few years with the program to see if I could assist. I reached out to Dr. Ash at Central Magnet School, where my daughter attends, and where our most recent exchange student from Germany had attended, to discuss the possibility of her attending there with the understanding that of course she would have to have strong academic credentials and a better-than-average proficiency in English. Dr. Ash let me know that he did not have an issue with her coming to CMS, however, we would need to check with the central office. I contacted the central office and was informed that my request would not be possible due to the fact that the deadline for foreign exchange student applications had already passed. And I understood this to be primarily because of issues of capacity with the school, schedules, placements, proficiency testing, and other administrative considerations, and that's perfectly sensible. While I understood the necessity of that policy, I inquired about the policy of an exception being granted due to the unique situation in which Ms. Sorenson had found herself. After being told no, I escalated my request to both Mr. Odom and the Mr. Burns for their input. Both gentlemen let me know again that the deadline was school board policy, and that an exception was probably unlikely, but after further communication, Mr. Burns informed me that an exception would be possible if only the following are true: one, there was no local student that was qualified and displaced off of the Central Magnet School waiting list; two, we could find appropriate scheduling, grade placement; and third, school board approval. So regarding the first two items of concern, I met personally with Dr. Ash and received confirmation from him that this request would not impact a locally qualified student due to the fact that there's no waiting list for qualified eleventh graders at the Magnet School. Dr. Ash further confirmed that he and his staff would work with the student upon her arrival and determine a challenging yet manageable course of study. He's in attendance this evening and should be able to address any of those concerns as well. Thank you, Dr. Ash, for your assistance. Regarding the third requirement, school board approval, I would respectfully request your support for this matter. This young lady, through no fault of her own, is now at risk of missing out on a significant life experience, and of course, we're at risk of missing out on a chance to be ambassadors for our culture, our state, and our wonderful school system. I thank you all for your consideration and respectfully request your approval for Anna Sorenson to join my family, our community, and Central Magnet School for the 2012-2013 academic school year. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sneed, for stating concisely what your situation is. Mr. Odom, you don't see any problems with this, I take it?
I did not. I checked with Dr. Ash. She does not have a waiting list for the junior class. This girl also meets the eighty percentile criteria, you know, for entry there, so that there's not... We also have a limited forward. He doesn't have any outside students coming in anyway, so it meets all of the things. Had it been on time, probably wouldn't have been an issue.
So what we need, if you're of a mind to do so, is... Just an exception to our policy of July fifteenth.
One question to Dr. Ash. So are we at... So we're not at capacity for the junior class at this point?
No, we're at one hundred ninety-four.
Okay. Okay. So is this something we can do right this moment?
Uh, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just discussed, and you know, I plead a bias here. I hosted a student from Macedonia, my wife and I. I'll go back to ninety-eight, I guess it was. It's been quite a while. It was a great experience for them and for her as well, and all the right bases been touched. I mean, I think that we're not hurting a single Rutherford County student in any way, shape, form, or fashion here. I think we're doing a lot of good, and he stated it very well, through no fault of her own.
And our students will benefit. I mean, I think we all are.
Absolutely. No question about it.
Now, Dr. Ash, will there be a parking spot for them?
No.[421.31][421.31](Laughter).
We'll add a hundred and one spaces.
If I'm not mistaken, unless rules have changed, they're not allowed to drive while they're...
They are not allowed to drive, hitchhike, or several other lists of no's. Yes.
So we have a motion, and a second. Any further discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. So thank you for your work on this, Mr. Sneed, and Dr. Ash, Mr. Odom.
Thank you.
So...
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your consideration.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thanks. That was our only visitor, so number seven.
Number seven. Celebrate My Drive. This is the teen safe driving presentation. Celeste Middleton and Mitch Fitzpatrick, State Farm representatives, and I've been versed a little bit on this, and it's a really good opportunity for our high school students.
And Mitch cannot be with us tonight. I'm sorry about that. He had to take this... He had to do something with his child tonight.
Welcome to you, Celeste. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to be here. My name is Celeste Middleton. I'm an agent with State Farm Insurance, and I have my agency manager, Gerald McCreary, with me, and we met with Doc... I'm sorry, Mr. Odom, Dr. Odom. I'm not sure which one it is. I apologize for that.
Mr. Odom.
A few weeks ago, and to discuss this event that State Farm is launching nationwide. This new campaign that State Farm is doing, it's not a marketing event. It is solely on trying to protect our youthful lives as they drive. So the name of this event is Celebrate My Drive, and as we were discussing with Superintendent Odom, we thought that it might be a good idea for one of us to come and explain what we were doing, because there's two parts to this. One is, we're trying to educate the youth on driving, try to reduce deaths and injuries. There's something in the Daily News Journal, I think the end of July, stating that Nashville, Franklin, and Murfreesboro, we were third in the nation in deaths and injuries to our youth. So State Farm wants to do what they can to help, and so in order to do that, we are having a campaign that will be out at the regional office on Memorial on Saturday, September the fifteenth. It'll be from ten to two, and we'll have various activities to try to educate the youth. In addition to that, we are... State Farm is also going to grant a hundred thousand dollars to a school across the United States, and since this is the inaugural year for State Farm to do it, we in Rutherford County have really tried to be as organized with this and do what we can do to help the high schools here in Rutherford County to win that one hundred thousand dollars. In order to do that, we'll have a week in advance from September the fifteenth. We are going to try to... I think we have a speaker. We have one of... A boy that was... His name was Blake. He was at UT. He was number three or four in the nation, and he had an accident. He was a tennis player at UT, and he had an accident while he was drinking, and he is going to be a speaker at the high schools. He gave... You gave us permission to go speak to the principals, and they have endorsed it, so we're gonna try to get as much as the student body we can to get involved, to try to vote, and there's different things. We've got the little flyer that will explain it, but one of the components is to win the hundred thousand dollars, and I think we have a really good chance, since this is the inaugural year or so, to try to help. We've got at least thirty-five people from the regional office that have volunteered to work with each school to try to get as much involvement as we can. Just some of the events, some of the things that we're... Activities that we're gonna do at this event, we're going to have the rollover simulator. We're gonna have a crash car with some quarterbacks, some athletic involvement. We're gonna have a semi truck, so some of the kids can get in the semi truck to understand the blind spots. We're gonna have some safety vehicles. We're gonna have some games for test their knowledge. Golf carts provided by the Sheriff's Department, they're gonna be there as well, with some DUI goggles. So anyway, we're trying to make it as interesting as we can to get the youth involved. So again, the reason we came tonight is just so you guys could know what we're doing.
Great. Sounds like an excellent program. Wayne?
Anytime we can raise that awareness, that's a good thing, and a hundred thousand dollars is a really good thing also. But a few years ago, I think before the texting craze really started, I think the statistics were that ninety percent of all first-year drivers had something happen to them in that first year. Now with texting and cell phones in every child's hands, I bet that has gone up, and it's probably closer to ninety-eight or ninety-seven percent. So any awareness is a really good thing.
And I think we're gonna have some information on the texting too, so... But we appreciate your support, and that's what State Farm is trying to do. Not anything marketing, just to try to help provide safety.
Great. Well, thank you for coming and telling us about it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks. Number eight.
Number eight. Spotlight on education tonight is coordinated school health, and Gina Sitzel will present an overview of the coordinated school health initiative, including an update on the walking trails and projects for two thousand twelve, thirteen. Gina, I would like for you to also... This lady has been very, very successful in receiving grants for this.
Yeah.
So if you'll weave that into your presentation, I think the board would be very interested in hearing that.
I'll put some of that in here.
Okay.
I'm Gina Sitzel. I run the coordinated school health program, and I'm just gonna show you a brief overview of what we accomplished last year and what it will be this year. It's interesting.
Is that what that is?
During the last school year, we screened twelve thousand nine new students, and when I say screened, we go in and take height, weight, and blood pressure of these students, and we screened K through eight, all the even grades, okay, two, four, six, eight. And maybe ninth grade, last year, we only did Blackman High School and Central. This will be the first year we do all of the high schools. And at the end of all that, we found that our percentage of overweight in our students is almost forty percent. So it's pretty high.
So it's pretty high. I'm concerned it's gonna go up even higher when you bring in the high school students next year, because there's a huge jump between second and fourth grade, so the older they get, the worse the numbers get. So you can go to the next one. So to combat this, when I'm not out screening, I'm in the office writing grants and trying to raise money so I can buy PE equipment, build the tracks, and that kind of thing. Thank you. So the kids have physical activity opportunities to try to reduce these numbers. Last year, I was able to raise a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to go towards those kind of projects. Go to the next page. This is a breakdown of the major grants and sponsorships I was able to get. MTSU-CIM is a concrete program, and I know you heard some about the tracks. Those students helped to build our tracks, and they helped us save quite a bit of money on each track. The Concrete Association donated a lot of materials. The Wellness Center donated equipment. United Way and Liberty Mutual and Predators, all that money went towards the tracks as well. I put up a bunch of pictures, 'cause I know you've heard about all these tracks and you haven't got to see them. This is Blackman Elementary. Go to the next one. These are the kids at Blackman. The PE teachers have them take one lap, at least one lap around the track, before they even begin PE class every day, so they use it all the time. Go to the next one. This is an outdoor fitness station center, outdoor fitness center that was built at Daniel McKee. I work with the principal out there to get funding for that. You go to the next one. And so there's all the stations, and this tells the kids how to use the different pieces of equipment, and they don't have PE out there, so it's really important out there. This is Rock Springs Elementary's track. They're all two-hundred-meter concrete tracks. And a lot of the teachers at that school take their kids out after lunch. They do a lap after lunch, so they're not as tired when they get back to the classroom and they're able to think better instead of being tired.
Gina, is this the porous concrete?
Yes.
Okay.
So even if it's just rained, there won't be any... There's no excuse to not use it, 'cause if it just rained, it'll go right through it. They can still walk on it. This is the track at McFadden. Go to the next one. That's just... So you can see how... I don't know if you can see it very well, but there's holes in there. The concrete chunks are really fat, and that's how the water can drain through there. Go to the next one. That's just another shot of their track, how it goes up by their playground. Go to the next one. The Wellness Center donated eighteen thousand dollars worth of equipment, and we had all the middle schools apply, 'cause I wanted to start fitness centers at the middle schools. Most of the schools applied. We had a committee vote, and Stewart's Creek Middle won, and so they cleared out their health room, and now they have a fitness center. This is very nice. Go to the next one. There's more picture. It just worked out that this equipment happened to be their school color, so it worked out nicely. Smyrna Middle School has a teacher who was trained in a bike safety course. She got all the training for free and all the curriculum, so she just needs the bikes. We weren't able to fund the bikes last year, but I talked to Walk Bike Nashville, and they donated this trailer with all the bikes and the helmets, so they were able to use it for the year. I believe on Monday, I should be getting a grant that will allow me to buy the bikes for them so they can continue the program, 'cause this was taken back, so we should be able to get them new bikes so they can keep doing this program year after year. Go to the next one. I just like this picture. I got a Predators Foundation grant, and so I got my picture taken with the Rascals. That was fun. Go to the next one. This year, we're looking at funding tracks at Brown's Chapel, Cedar Grove, David Jury, and Walter Hill. I should be able to get some more funding. I'd like to get at least six tracks this year. I've already talked to MTSU, and they're committed to working with me, and the goal is to get the walking tracks at every elementary school. So as long as I can keep getting the grant money, we should be able to get them all done. The Smyrna Middle bikes, as I told you, we're gonna do outdoor fitness stations at Cedar Grove. We're gonna put them inside their track, so they'll be like the Daniel McKee stations will just be smaller. We're gonna do a fruit and vegetable program at Laverne Primary, so they'll be getting a new fruit or vegetable every Monday, Wednesday, or Friday. So they'll get to eat it for snack, and they'll learn about what it is. The active monitors that you received, we bought several of those cases, so the PE teachers can use those, and it's a way, instead of just your kids saying, "Yeah, I'm running as hard as I can," they can actually track it and give them a grade based on what they're really doing. So we're getting those out to the teachers, and we're gonna complete fitness centers at Laverne Middle and Rock Springs Middle. We start them a little bit at the end of the year, and then our money ran out, but we're starting that back up, so those should be complete this year. And another reason that I gave you guys those heart rate monitors is because the Tennessee School Board Association has put out a challenge, and there's twelve criteria to meet, and for... As you can see, for each of the criteria you meet, you get more money. As of this point, we've met six of the twelve criteria, and there's a handout beside you that has all twelve, and I've marked the six that we've already met. Go to the next one. So to get at least a thousand dollars, I need two more criteria met, and I'm working with the nutrition department to get number two right now, which is to get one of our schools certified as USDA healthier U.S. school. So number eight would be for the board members to participate in a wellness program. And so I made it easy. If you guys can just wear these, we can consider that our wellness program, and then we can check off our eighth criteria, and we can get a thousand dollars, which I can then use for one of my tracks, which would be great. This is just so you can see, this is what you have. It'll tell you how many steps you've taken, how many calories you've burned. It tells you your activity level, whether it's very vigorous, moderate, whether it's easy, and it also is a watch, so you can run it all the time. It'll tell you what time it is, so... And that's really it for me, unless you guys had any more questions, and hopefully you'd be willing to wear these for a little bit, so we can check that off.
You're doing some great work there.
So if Dr. Burns eats a big old fat cheeseburger, will it tell?
That won't show up. That won't show up.
I'll walk it off. So do we go to the nearest third grader to figure out how to operate the thing?[1258.52][1258.52](Laughter).
They're very... I can show you. They're very good. We got the kids using them.
If it'll do heart rate when we start zoning, that would be...[1265.42][1265.42](Laughter).
Really? Questions for Gina? Or comments?
Great job.
She does a great job, as you can see, and very well-received at school level, very energetic in obtaining these grants.
Well, that's great to take advantage of that grant money, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We will pledge to wear these long enough so that we can check off...
Okay, great. I have to turn it in October first, so if we can make it till then, that would be great. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot. Let's see, number nine.
Number nine was the item for the transportation for Central Magnet School football players to Eagle school for practice and games, and we discussed this a little bit on Tuesday.
We did, and I mean, I think we all know what the issues are in this matter. I don't... Did we say that we were gonna let somebody speak, Joyce or Donald, or I don't know that we need to hear anymore, but if someone came with the idea that they're gonna be allowed to speak, I don't wanna cut them off. I'm getting some blank looks, so I might just be...
I think one of the ladies talked to me. She was planning to speak, but I don't think she...
One of y'all wanted to speak, or...
No, we don't feel like we're allowed to.
Okay, well, I don't think you do either, but I don't wanna deny you the opportunity if you... Okay. So we had some discussion about this on Tuesday, and we've all had some calls and emails about this. I think if we just turn it over to Dr. Ash and the school and say, "We're okay with you all working out a solution," that we won't be needing to rescind our previous motion, and everything will be swell, I think. Donald?
Dr. Ash and Mr. Tollitt, the work on that would be fine, but I still have some questions.
Okay.
And one question is, Central Middle School, we gave them money for their transportation of athletic teams. I believe they bought a bus with that at one time, a used bus, and I'd kinda like to know where that bus is.
We'll just have to do a little research. I don't have no contact. Joyce, will you make a note?
I'm on track. I believe Jeff's not here, so I think I'm on track, so...
Dr. Ash is... Seems to be indicating it's not at Central now, right?
I've not been at Central from the three years I've been, 'cause I was there here for Ashell.
That was...
We played in the Christian, and they did have a long bus, and I didn't worry any problems with it.
It came from the money that we gave them to transport their teams.
Okay, well, Mr. Odom will investigate and find out what happened.
But I think that the group working on trying to solve this problem, Dr. Ash and Mr. Tollitt, but there's two other groups. Booster Club at Central Magnet, the Booster Club at Eagle, they have a lot to... A lot invested in these programs, and I think it would be wise to have them as part of the group to come up with a plan. May I ask, Dr. Ash?
Sure.
The football players at Central Magnet, those parents, are they part of the Booster Club at Central or Eagleville?
Eagleville.
Eagle.
We are an Eagleville team, not a Central team.
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
Eagleville.
Eagle. Well, with that, but Central Booster Club has something involved in this too, I think. So I would like to see those folks represented in this. There might be other companies, and people might... But I think that they might have a solution to it, but one of the things I think we need to look at is where that bus is, if it's still in existence. Time might have gone out on it. And also, I think whatever they come up with, I think should be reported back to the board. That's my thing.
Okay. Other thoughts? Grant?
Translation director's here. I wonder if he might know about the bus.
Mrs. Jernigan and I did... We spoke about it earlier. There was a bus, but we don't necessarily know where it went, unless it may have gone to Christiana, one Christiana. The bus got wrecked.
No.
Didn't?
Did not.
Okay.
Well, don't you have records where they go at the time?
Not from schools.
It would have been surplus if they were like...
Mr. Homel of Delar, I wonder if...
I don't know.
Yeah. We'll just have to do some checking on that. I don't think we're... Anybody can give a definitive answer on that tonight, where that went.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Since Donald and I are going off, and I know he's interested in this, we have one more meeting, I think, before we go off the board this time. Do you think we could schedule that, so Donald would have some, maybe some information that is needed on that?
Sure.
We'll talk to you together, you know?
I'm gonna have that...
We'll let you know before that, since we find out.
Right.
Yeah, but thank you, Grant, but this is not a... My, this is a...
Whatever you brought up, it needs to be known, it's, you know, needs to be found out.
Wayne?
Going back to that motion, maybe we need to discuss that the spirit of the motion was not, you know, draw a line in the sand. Nothing could be done to help in transportation. It's just that the board was not going to provide transportation, and I don't know if we're in a gray area or not, but, you know, I'm not opposed to Mr. Odom and Dr. Ash and Mr. Tollitt and, like Donald said, with Booster Club getting all these parties together and working this out, but I don't believe the spirit of that motion was to, you know, to cut it completely out. Excuse me. You know, I think it still gives that... It opens the door to working it out on a school level rather than on a board level. That's my thought.
And I agree with that interpretation, and I think on Tuesday, Mr. Reed said, "If we took such an action or gave permission, it would not be violating that motion that was adopted whenever this was, two years ago." That's right, isn't it, Jeff?
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't know if you want, I don't know that we need a motion at this moment, or, no, I mean, entertain one, I mean, but in the absence of any action, they're free to go about. Jeff, will you step up and hold our hands and assure us that everything's gonna be okay?
No, if they wanna take some action in regards to this on the school level or at the Booster Club level between the parents, they certainly are free to do that on their own. That would not be volutive of any policy or stances the Board of Education has taken on the matter.
In other words, we bless you, go forward and work out, work out something, and we're fine with that. I think that that's what we all want, right? Okay, so it sounds like we don't need any action, and we wish you the best, and... Good luck. Okay? Anything else on that item? Number ten.
Number ten's financial matters, and this is an amendment to the general purpose school budget. This amendment covers ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars in insurance recovery revenue from last October's hailstorm, and uses twenty thousand to complete roof repairs and increases the budget for building and contents insurance and vehicle insurance by seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. The seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen will be used to replenish the school board's portion of the county's self-insurance fund. And the recommended approval is a motion to amend ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars in insurance recovery revenue account forty-nine seven hundred to increase building repair service by twenty thousand, account seventy-two six twenty dash three thirty-five to increase building and content insurance by thirty-nine thousand one hundred and sixteen, account seventy-two six ten dash five oh two, and to increase vehicle insurance by thirty-nine thousand seven hundred, account seventy-two seven ten dash five eleven, as presented.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Number eleven are our policies, is our policies. Whichever would be grammatically correct there. Number eleven is the item containing our policies. I don't think we need Don to read those unless someone objects.
Do we, will we need a motion to pass on, I guess we'll need a motion to pass on one reading?
We've got two motions down, I think.
Right, at the bottom, yeah. Do you wanna read those, Don?
I will. Recommend approval. First motion is a motion to waive the second reading, second meeting limitation to allow the board to take immediate action on the policies presented. And the second motion is recommend approval motion to approve policies one point four hundred, one point seven oh four, five point two hundred, five point two oh one, five point eight oh three, six point two oh four, three point five hundred, five point one seventeen, six point four eleven, four point seven hundred, six point four oh five, six point three sixteen, and six point four zero eighty-one, as recommended by the Policy Committee.
Move to waive the second reading on these policies.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. Move to approve the policies. Okay. Discussion. On favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's adopted. General discussion. Mr. Taffey?
I think it's a really good time in light of a neighboring system that's struggling through some very difficult situations between school board and county commission, to give some thanks to our county commission for cooperative nature that we've had, and hopefully from the school board, seven members on this board and prior to, having the foresight and good judgment to be able to make things work out in an appropriate way. I just think our citizens here in this county should be somewhat, I don't know, grateful is the right word or not, but at least recognition that the two boards or the commission and the board have worked together so far to make this thing work out and not get into an impasse and still be able to be an exemplary school.
Right. Oh, I agree. I appreciate you raising that, Tim. Every time I see a news story about that, I'm grateful.
Yeah, actually spending about two hundred or less dollars per pupil, and per pupil expended here than that system already, and still you're accomplishing.
Nobody can understand what's going on in this system and complain about the way we spend our money, I don't think. I mean, to be one of the top twenty-one systems in the state, and I don't know what number we are in terms of funding, but it's way down the list.
It's about a thousand dollars less than state average, that I do know.
State average, it is. Nine ninety-eight, I think it was.
Don, can you give us a little bit of a report on the first day of school, and particularly the enrollment? And maybe the story that we saw in the paper about city and county schools and some of the tension that was going on there?
Basically, first day enrollment, it's a partial day. The number that enrolled was less than what we finished last year. That's very typical, doesn't mean anything, basically. You'll see a larger number come in tomorrow when you have your first full day, and next week, you'll begin to get some numbers. We'll give that to you, we kinda feel like we've got some firm numbers, but that'll start coming next week. We did discover, I think, this week, our Blackman Schools are really growing. The elementary school, we provided, two teachers already may have to provide another one or two additional, the middle school, looking at a couple of teachers there. It appears that maybe it scales, the sixth grade was quite large, and they may have been directed to come to Rutherford County Schools. At least that's what the principals told me, to take a look at Rutherford County Schools. So it was interesting that the enrollment that we saw at Blackman Middle School for sixth grade was larger than the seventh and eighth grade enrollment. And we typically, our sixth grade usually runs sixty, hundred and twenty less than the seventh and eighth grade enrollment because of the students staying in the sixth grade. There's a lot of growth going on in St. Andrews and that area. So I think it's something you've talked about as a board before, that some inquiries were made, and I know Gary and some of them talked about it, was it city planning another school or so? So we've got, if anybody feels anything, you're at least a couple of years out from anything. So there's gonna be some issues for the next couple of years, especially in that area because of growth.
I mean, the city has, I don't know if they've approved it, though, but the city system certainly has expressed interest in building another school out there somewhere. But I don't know if the funding's in place for that yet or not. Okay, well, thank you for that. Any questions on that? I mean, that's something for those of you who'll be here next month to keep an eye on. Wayne?
Having Ms. Middleton here tonight in this insurance recovery reminds me that at some point in time, we had asked as a board for periodic updates from the insurance committee. And I don't know that we've gotten anything, or when you have met. So if we could get that going, you know, again, or at least have that occur, maybe we could get a report after. How many meetings would y'all have?
We do the thing monthly, but the summer meetings have been canceled because of lack of new information. I think the last update that we gave you was, included the insurance increases that are gonna take place effective in January. So that has been presented. Nothing new since then, but open enrollment will start in October, so we'll keep giving you updates about that.
Thank you. Just a reminder that we'd like to see that.
Right. Other discussion? Terry?
I'd just make a general comment in regards to this sour supplements we got the other night. I think we need to commend all these booster clubs for the amount of money. I don't know if anybody looked at the total, but something about half a million dollars. And if you look at all the individuals that participate, it's pretty big numbers. And hopefully, the new system will get in place and work out for the world of ours.
That's a good point. That's a half a million dollars that didn't come from the taxpayers. Well, it did, but it came directly from the parents. Depends how you look at it, but it wasn't a tax.
It was a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
That's right. Other discussion? Aaron?
This past week, I was able to go to Smyrna Middle School for a community outreach event that they had in the evening. There were several merchants that had booths that were there in the gymnasium, and just to meet parents and participate in the school sponsorship, a lot of the merchants said, "Such an event like this, where they weren't asked to do anything except just show up and share with the community what they offer and interact in the school setting, made them much more receptive when the school might come calling for some sponsorship or participation in some event." And it was just an outstanding effort on part of Smyrna Middle School. Mr. Odom was there as well, and it was a great event. So kudos to them. Also, I think maybe in our last meeting this month, we may spend a moment or two focusing on those that are leaving the board, but I think that it's appropriate tonight to extend congratulations to three that we anticipate coming onto the board, David Nipper, Cole Young, and Helen Blankenship. But even beyond that, all those who ran, to citizens who stepped up and asked their neighboring citizens for the opportunity to represent them and be a part. It takes a certain amount of courage to put your name on the ballot and your face in the newspaper, and I congratulate those who participated in that way. As school gets started, I'm reminded of the parent academy that we did at some point last year. I attended that and heard from a middle school teacher that we have here in Rutherford County who talked about the first day of school. And it was probably the first full day of school when each of the students came around to their classroom, and their practice was to have a test on the first day of school, just to get them back into the feeling of taking a test and focusing on school, and "This is not gonna count in your grade," or anything, they explained, "But I want you to take this seriously and take this test and turn it in, and then I'll see you tomorrow." And that teacher explained to the parents that were gathered there that they took that test home and scored it, and what it told them were the individual personalities that were gathered in that classroom. When they came back the next day, they would use that for a seating chart that gathered people of a like personality together, so that those who really thrived on words of affirmation, or those who thrived on receiving gifts, or people who needed a physical touch to really get sparked in their personality, were kind of grouped together. And it was a method that that teacher used in order to connect to other students. I was incredibly inspired by it. I thought it was just excellent, and I thought it was a wonderful example of the kind of things that we have in an exemplary system. I tell the story as often as I can, and as we get started this year, I thought I would share it again.
Okay. Thank you, Aaron.
Ms. Blankenship, Mr. Nipper, you can expect a test on your first...
And then Joyce will sit you according to your personality. And that'll be very telling, who you're placed next to. Any other discussion? Okay, reminder, on Monday at five-thirty, right, Joyce? We have the first of several zoning meetings. And then last night, I think, or Tuesday, I announced the change on those meetings in the last week of this month, so we are adjourned.